May I ask you all please to raise your flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Welcome to our work session for Wednesday, November 15. Please join us through our Zoom system. The phone number, meeting ID, and path code are on our website and also available on today's agenda. First order business, Chief Parker in the district, we're in executive session now.
Here we go.
Okay, next, produce a public comment. Anyone care to give public comments this morning? Good morning, Laura.
Good morning. My name is Laura Priselski. Excuse me, I live in Potsville. Mayor and City Council of Potsville passed an ordinance that if a citizen goes anywhere beyond the law without an escort, we're trespassing in that public building. The building is posted on both sides of the building, no trespassing signs. Monday night, I attempted to attend the city council meeting. I signed in, and by law, I requested for my escort to escort me to council chambers. The girl who was sitting behind the desk had no knowledge of this law and just said, "Oh, you can go ahead." And I'm going, "Okay, I can now break the law." So, she just had no knowledge of this. Anyway, I headed to council chambers by elevator and was unable to get off of the elevator at the second floor because it was locked. You don't have the law to get off of that floor. So, I took a short walk and thought, "You know what, I'll come back in a little bit." So, I went back in a little bit, and the elevator was unlocked. So, council did its thing and pledged allegiance to the flag, and they definitely prayed to God that they'd be doing public service and that they serve us. So, I'm looking around, and for all of the times that I've been here, they've never had a published agenda the way this body does. And so, I stood up and said, "Can I please have an agenda?" Oh, we don't have one. The city clerk had been off work on Friday, so she didn't have to do an agenda for Monday. She was too busy. And I said, "Well, you know what, the Sunshine Act says that you're supposed to have an agenda here." "No, we don't have to. We put it on the internet." I said, "That's not what the Sunshine Act says. What do you get an agenda for?" Anyway, so, we didn't have an agenda, and I just lost my place. I'm trying to get back real quickly. Okay. And so, what happened next was, I was pointing out, I said, "You know, how can you break the -- because you didn't go to work on Friday, you have the right to break the law on Monday. How does that work? You're telling me I can't come into this building unless I'm escorted from point A to point B, and then I have to be escorted out of the building?" So, what I'm getting at is the code of the city of Potsville is extremely arbitrary and capricious. We only enforce the law against the people that we want to enforce the law against. If somebody says, "Hey, you can go," you can -- there's no such thing in law that somebody can give you the right to break the law. I can't tell you that you can go out and rob something, and then you can say, "Oh, well, I had permission to go and do that." This is insane what is going on with the state of Potsville, to pray, to be a good public servant, and then deprive people of rights and freedom of speech. And I would encourage everybody to look at the city council meeting, because what you'll see is you'll see people rolling eyes.
Three minutes left.
That's the fastest three minutes. Here we go. No Constitution. Thank you. Are we ever going to change this? Is this -- you know, you can just --
It's our policy.
The policy. It's not law, it's policy. It's not the Constitution. We just have a policy.
Laura, you're --
Yes, I'm leaving. I'm leaving. You'll have this guy who takes over the office coming to the room. Thank you.
Who else want to give a public comment today? Morning, George.
Good morning. George Tancovitch, Palayalto. Just like to comment, let's see that painting on the wall there. I didn't notice that before. For Washington, I think that's what our politicians better get back to. Get on your hands and knees and start praying that they do the right thing for the people that they're supposed to be serving. They fall short, most of them. I won't say all, most of them fall short of what they're supposed to do for the people. And I'm tired of this. I see so many people losing their homes, can't eat, can't get help. When they go for help, they're told, "Oh, you make too much money." Well, let me tell you this. There's people out here in this -- in Potsville alone that never worked a day of their life. There's no -- nothing wrong with them other than being lazy. And how do you build their character so they can pay into the system is make them go out and work for a living, just like most of us here have done. I don't know what the problem is. That is fraud when you don't work for what you are receiving. And I don't know how to get that any clearer. I talked to senators, I talked to congressmen, and it just doesn't make anything reliable or clear. They don't like hearing the truth, and the truth is slapping them in the face each and every day. It's time that we take care of our veterans who made our country safe for us to live in. We're overlooking this. Like I put right up last week, 20% more this year are committing suicide. Our servicemen. This is ridiculous. There's got to be help out there for these people. I've finally seen they're trying to build some homes now. Finally, after years of pleading, they're finally building homes so these men can at least live some type of a normal -- normal life instead of freezing out here. It's cold coming in, and these people are living outside. This is ridiculous in the United States. And senior citizens of state that worked their whole lives, and now they can't afford taxes, and they want to raise our taxes. Isn't that a nice way to treat people? Raise our taxes, what they can afford now, they want to raise further. This is ridiculous. This is unconstitutional. It's not what our forefathers had set forth for each and every soul that worked for a living. I think it's time that the school up here get checked out, because I think they throw money away on nonsense. Get a new pad every other year. This is ridiculous, and it's time for a change, and the change better happen soon.
Anyone else want to give a public comment this morning? Yes, sir. Good morning.
Morning. Andy Zloski, Palayalto, staff representative for House District Council 9. As gentlemen before said, people needing help. Well, with the vacancies going on here in the courthouse and numerous requests to have meetings still unanswered, you might call there and ask for help. Example, tax assessment. There's currently two. Let me double check. Three vacancies at the tax assessment office. So, if you call there and need assistance, you might not get answered. Office of Senior Services, there's currently five vacancies, all without the county wanting to sit down, meet, and discuss on how to fill these vacancies. As last meeting here, there's talks of hiring an agency of recruitment and retention, but yet they won't sit with the union and talk on how to help with recruitment retention issues. Another thing on needing assistance, currently the 911 center is down to seven operators. When's it going to be that the phones aren't going to be answered there? What are the answers here? What's it going to take to have the county want to sit down and talk on ways to make these attractive positions work? Constituents, taxpayers of this county want to come to work and stay here. We could throw any agency in here, we want billboards and whatnot, but if it's not truly attractive to apply, and once you get in that street respectfully, you stay. What does it take? Takes to sit down and talk, but yet, no contact. Local president requested to HR to have a meeting about the Office of Senior Services that has been left unanswered for a few weeks now. We have applicants, but Nandrea won't hire any of the applicants that come through because they don't meet her criteria. Not the criteria it takes to work there, but the criteria that she deems necessary to work for her. We need to sit down. The public needs to know what's going on here. Why the county can't fill positions. I can't answer. I'm only casting on deaf ears my request to have a meeting. Thank you for your time. Hopefully, we get an answer soon from HR or from the county who wants to sit down and meet. Thank you.
Anyone else want to give a public comment this morning? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name's Tara Wilson. I work for Appsgie as well, along with Andy, and represent some of the employees here at Scoopel County. I'm here to talk a little bit about fiscal management, right, and the way that we're spending tax dollars. You heard the gentleman speak earlier about taxes and also about the things in this community that are going on to protect the numbers of the community. I think it's important to note that even though Andy talked about all the departments in the county, he specifically left out the fact that the 911 center is currently at about half staff. That's a big deal, right? You've got people answering your 911 calls that are tired, have worked 16 hours, are ready to go home, haven't seen their families in a while. People make mistakes, right? People make more mistakes when they're tired, and that is just a proven fact. So, like I said, I wanted to comment about being fiscally responsible. Scoopel County received $22.4 million from the American Rescue Plan, so free money from the federal government that you were supposed to use to support your workers for the -- there was three things you were supposed to use the money for, and I understand that you did use some of it for some of the workers in the courthouse or in the county, employed by the county. I'm asking you to allocate the funds that are left to help raise the rates of the people that are working for you, the people that are doing the work to keep the county thriving, the people that are doing the work to keep the county happening. I don't believe all of the funds are allocated yet. You still have some money left. You have to spend it by 2026, and so, I would ask that you take a little bit of time, see if there's any money you can move around, try to get them some higher rates of pay, try to get those people some increases and some relief there so that those people can go home, they can sleep, and you have good, solid, not tired people answering your 911 calls when the people in the community desperately need people that are ready, able, and capable to help them when they call. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else want to give a public comment?
Before I get my three minutes started, is there any update on the parcels that I gave several weeks ago to be looked into, why they're being sold illegally at the sale door that I emailed you then? Chris paid you copies that day and dropped them off. Is there any update on those?
Your three minutes are --
I asked, if I can ask this question before, there's nobody answering.
You're going to give your public comment.
Okay. So, like the woman said, mistakes are made when people are tired. Oops, it was nice to see that you fell asleep again at the chamber breakfast for the veterans this week. That was great. I think the multiple car accidents you've been in the last couple of months need to be investigated. That's why you drive to work with your windows down, stay awake and fully agree with her. Speaking of hiring and wages, there's a sign out there for a maintenance person with carpentry experience, starting wage under $14 an hour. Yeah, you're looking like you don't even know because you don't -- it's a disgrace. 911, Andy and Tara, they both just mentioned it. 22 overtime shifts this week. It's on trend to be on average 20 overtime shifts per week, every week. And you people sit here and ignore the call for help. Go down there and talk to those people. Pull them aside, away from everybody, and talk to them and ask them what they need. They need help. And the ones I talked to, they're not looking for wage increases themselves. They're looking for a fair wage for people to start, to be an attractive job, to get people in there to help them. They're missing family events. They're working 16 hours a day, like she said. They're missing everything. They're exhausted. They're going in to pick up extra parts of shift so they're not mandated. They're trying to help each other, and you people sit up here and completely ignore it. You're at your catering business, you're at your farm, and you're at your insurance company. Meanwhile, these people are down there struggling. You are collecting a $65,000 a year paycheck, and they're lucky if they're getting $20 an hour. These are a disgrace, an absolute disgrace. Oops, just on your mailers here. Support our first responders, increase community safety. That's BS. Made distorted investments in public safety. More BS. All you did is lie to people. Office of Senior Services, they're working at a two-times caseload, and recommended by the state of Pennsylvania. You can sit there and smirk and smile while you want, boots. You're a disgrace as a commissioner. Tax claim, that's self-explanatory. You were sent to help years ago. Where'd that get you? Send some Twinkies over, that's about it. Everything said, "She won't hire them because it's not her criteria." I gave you so many parcels that were illegally sold. He's won't investigate it, he won't get back to me. Your disregard for the county employees is a disgrace, absolute disgrace. Between George's victims and their retaliation, 786 days today, they're suspended without pay. You refused to bring them back because of an ongoing investigation that was closed a year and a half ago. Mr. Bender did the same exact thing, instructed an employee to do an illegal activity that they were accused of, found innocent of by two different DOJ and the unemployment. He didn't instruct his person to do it. He was never investigated. Yet, you have another woman fudging time cards down at the county, frauding the county, and she's allowed to stay on and get a raise. You're a joke.
Anyone else care to give a public comment?
Sure.
Good morning. Greg Wall, Scoopel County. I didn't shake him. So, first off, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Hess. Congratulations for being elected to your fourth term. Boots, Mr. Fedora, congratulations. After 20 years, you guys finally won a county by election. Great job. So much, so much said. Really can't add on to that, except I hope Larry does do, and it says, runs the county like business. Unfortunately, he's probably going to run it like his business. It's going to be open one day a week because we're not going to have employees here working. It's very unfortunate. But I want to talk about what I really committed to talk about before I told my three minutes were up. Last week, $1.6 million move around county budgets. We weren't told about it until line item seven or eight in the meeting. Paul Bluber continues to refuse to tell us why we're moving money around, what we're moving around for, and what it's being used for, where it comes from, what type of tax dollars it is. Again, this week, $19,000 moving around, $10,000 planning and zoning. What are they not spending money on? What are they spending money on now that we have to move $10,000? $19,000 total. On top of that, we are now requesting a motion for a resolution, 111523, to set forth their preliminary budget for 2024 and the millage for 2024. Where is that? It's not online. Most people can't come to the courthouse to look at it, so why is it not visible? Why are we not seeing this? Where's the preliminary budget? Should -- are the county taxpayers not allowed to see the budget for next year? We not allowed to see what millage rate we're going to be taxed at for our properties?
We listed right after we --
Why can we not see it beforehand? Why is it taking every meeting? When we want -- when some money is moved around or we're told about it? None of these resolutions that are shown are ever given to us. None of them are ever seen. I can never find them on our county website. The budget, where is it? Is it in the third basement? Where is it? Why is it not posted online? It's a very simple thing. Go to your Word doc, set print as PDF, send it to IT, and guarantee they can upload it to the website, and it'd be very simple. It would improve the transparency around here tenfold. It's very simple. Thank you.
Anyone else care to give a public comment? If not, we'll move on to our agenda three. Brian Myers, Cheryl.
Good morning.
Morning, Cheryl.
This morning, I am requesting a motion to approve a change order number two for the Pine Grove's Plutarch Flood Control Project contract with the Flotting Resource Restoration Company for $191,350, increasing the contract from $1,277,200 to $1,468,550. This change order is for storm sewer services, excess soil removal, retaining wall, and clearing access and stabilization for the stockpile area.
Okay, so, the motion to change order number two for Pine Grove's Plutarch Flood Control Project. Is there a motion for that? Go ahead. On the question roll call.
Mr. Hes.
Yes.
Mr. Hes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thanks, Cheryl. Next up, we show over to you, that Blake Carl, good morning.
Good morning. Morning, Commissioners. Carl Marvel, Assistant Administrator, Agent for you. We're here today with eight items for the Commissioner's consideration, four agreements, four addenda to existing agreements. First is a request for approval of an agreement with Mary Key, Parisburg, Pennsylvania, for foster care services, per diem rates as follows. The code BB Foster Care Plus is at $95.37. Enhanced Level Care is at $142.43. Mother with Infant Level of Care is at $145.61. Emergency Respite with code HH is at $116.67 for the term July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. Also, at the same term, requesting approval of an agreement with Clear Vision Residential Treatment Services Incorporated at Montgomery, Pennsylvania for residential treatment services at a per diem rate of $213.80. Also, at the same term period, we're requesting approval of an agreement with Children's Home Easton in Easton, Pennsylvania for community-based residential services, per diem rates as follows. General Residential is at $244.11. Shelter Program is at $282.28. Group Home Level Care is at $261.09. Ziegmond Hall Specialized Setting Program is at $567.43. And the organization also provides foster care services. Rates for traditional level of care, code AA, is at $100.88 per diem. Finally, on agreements with the same term, July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024, requesting approval of an agreement with Delphi Village, Latro, Pennsylvania, for residential services with per diem rates as follows. Their intensive program is at $356.19. An intensive mental health program is at $434.81. Secure programming is at $486.49. Secure programming focused on sexual offenses is at $522.49. The organization also offers foster care services, and the per diem rates are as follows. Intensive kinship program is at $94.60. Pregnant parenting program is at $100.67. And the teen focus level care is at $109.09. On the agenda, we also have four addenda. First is addenda to the current agreement with Friendship House, Sprat, Pennsylvania, dated September 14, 2022, extending its term period to include fiscal year 2023, 2024 at current rates and terms by amending the end date to June 30, 2024. Similar with stepping stones, family services. We're looking to add their agreement dated July 22, 2022, to extend the term period to include fiscal year 2023, 2024 at current rates and terms by amending the end date to June 30, 2024. The addendum with open door writing Pennsylvania is a little different, but it does extend the term period, but this addendum actually involves a reduction of the per diem rates for services effective July 1, 2023, and through the remainder of the term. Those affected rates are traditional foster care, going down to $83.75. Specialized foster care at $95.75. The mother-infant foster care program at $141.13. The addendum otherwise extends the term period at current rates and terms, including fiscal year 2023. Finally, we have an addendum with Justice Works Youth Care to propose. This is a little different than other addenda that we typically look at here. This one is related to an anticipated increase in their own insurance cost. They had budgeted for those costs to go up by 20%. In fact, what happened is instead their cost went up by over $1.2 million. They have made the request to all county schools, which they're contracted in other states, and we did follow up with a request for supportive information to look at their own budget, their insurance policies, how the breakdown would affect us. This was something we kept related on our end, and then to support the information, we also took a closer look at their audit report. We are satisfied that a 3.8% adjustment to their fee for service rates is appropriate to the need. We also see with Justice Works, a provider that's currently providing 223 different families within county services at a request, provide to 415 different county individual residents. Very important for us, and we don't like to look at increasing rates mid-term. That addendum includes the Just Care and Mention Services at $82.19 per hour. Their intensive stop level of service at $87.67 per hour. Plans of Safe Care and Family Finding are two different services, each will go to $70.58 per hour. Visit Code Change at $82.19 per hour. Also, terms were introduced to this addendum for them to notify us in the event that they get insurance policies more in line with their original projections, and for those rates to revert upon purchase of said policies. In case I did not know, for the record, those, the rate change would be effective number first in line with the December release.
Thank you, Carl.
Carl, these rates, all these, they've been reviewed also by the state, and they're within the parameters of the state of their allowances?
Justice Works, I cannot say that's the case. They're not licensed by the state, nor do they run budgets through state as an in-home service provider. I will say with regard to all of the other items presented, that is the case, and in fact, the open door rate reduction has to do with their rates being included by the state lower than what we had within last year.
Which one is not covered by the --
Justice Works. The Justice Works.
Okay. Any other questions for Carl?
I feel next week when we go to the South. Any other questions? Okay, that's Carl. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Next up, mental health and mental health services. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Carl.
Good morning. Carl Robinson, DMA Administrator, filling in for Elaine Gilbert. We are requesting approval to reappoint Stacy Stademeyer and CJ Bogansky to the Mental Health Developmental Services Advisory Board for a three-year term, effect down November 13, 2023 to December 30, 2026. Motion requested.
The motion requested to appoint, reappoint Stacy Stademeyer of Axon, and CJ Bogansky of St. Clair to the Mental Health Developmental Services Board for three-year terms. Our motion. Go ahead. On the question roll call.
Mr. Hes.
Yes.
Mr. Alco.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Thanks, Carl.
Thank you, ma'am. Morning, Linda Archer.
Good morning, Commissioners. First, on today, I have the October 2023 Treasury Report, ending balance in all accounts
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, next up, we have our financial officer, Paul Bluber.
Good morning, Paul.
Commissioners, good morning. This morning, I have several budget adjustments I'd like to present. Each budget adjustment has an explanation on the bottom, and we're reallocating budgetary authority between line items within the respective departmental budget, and we are not increasing overall spending. First one I'd like to present is on behalf of District Justice Courts for $77. Next is also on behalf of District Justice Courts for $2,500. Next is on behalf of Risk Management for $2,050. Next is on behalf of Courts for $796. Next is on behalf of Courts for $3,300. Next is on behalf of Domestic Relations for $1,224. The last one is on behalf of --
Last one is on behalf of Planning and Zoning, for ten thousand dollars. Commissioners, what this budget adjustment represents is they did budget money for a particular service, however, they're falling short, and so they need some additional funds to cover. They're paying invoices to Amazon Web Service, a monthly fee for cloud-based service to support the GIS system, and this is their anticipated meet between now and the end of the year.
Okay, we have seven different requests for choice adjustment for twenty twenty-three budget. Once again, no additional agency money is being involved. For District Courts, we have two of them. First of seventy-seven dollars, second one, two thousand five hundred. Under Risk Management group, two thousand fifty dollars, with the Courts, seven hundred ninety-six, also the Courts, thirty-three hundred. Domestic Relations, one dollar, four hundred and four dollars, and planning planning zoning ten thousand, with their motion approved, these seven.
Go ahead.
Second. On the question roll call?
Commissioner Hetherton?
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
I'll leave you with a budget presentation.
I do, Commissioners, and before I move forward with reading the resolution, if I may, I'd like to make a couple comments.
Please.
Commissioners, the county's twenty twenty-four budgetary process began in August, and today, the financial team, consisting of Gary Bender, Chris Kearns, and myself, would like to present a summary of the process. The overall county budget includes a general fund, five human service agencies, about twenty other special revenue funds, a capital project and reserve fund, an internal service fund, and a debt service fund. The total twenty twenty-four preliminary budget for the entire county operation is two hundred million, five hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. The total twenty twenty-four preliminary budget for the general fund is eighty-three million, three hundred and sixty-one dollars, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars. In the early stages of the twenty twenty-four budgetary process, expenditures exceeded revenues for the general fund by about sixty million, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. By performing reviews on all budgets, by performing a trend analysis on all expenditure line items, and by having dialogue and discussions with departments and agency directors and with row officers, the financial team was able to reduce the deficit with cost savings of six million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars for the general fund budget. In order to balance the preliminary budget for the general fund, the preliminary budget being presented today includes a draw of ten million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars from the unassigned fund balance. However, the Board of Commissioners may want to consider other options. Significant drivers of the increased operational cost in the general fund include the following: a three percent, or about six hundred and forty-five thousand, compensatory increase for all employees except for elected officials; a fifteen percent, or about two million, five hundred thousand increase for healthcare. Commissioners, a big driver of our healthcare cost are the new drugs coming into the marketplace; a seventeen percent, or about one hundred and ten thousand increase for comprehensive insurance; a fifty-five percent, or about seven hundred and twenty thousand increase for outsourcing of prisoners; a ten percent, or about four hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollar increase for the children and youth agency allocation from the county general fund. After drawing ten million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars, a sufficient amount of funds will remain in the unassigned fund balance to cover the cash flow squeeze for the months of January and February until tax revenue is collected in March. Real estate tax mileage will remain at fifteen point nine eight mils. This will be the sixth year for no tax increase. For the last four years, the county has also been able to maintain a bond rating, a double A two, with Moody's Investor Service. This is the third-best rating out of the sixteen rating grades. Finance Administration will also like to mention a new initiative being requested by nine-one-one for twenty twenty-four. It's a five-point-nine million dollar project, which includes an upgrade to a voice recorder, an additional tower site in Union Township, purchase of eighteen radios, and a TDMA initiative. If the Board of Commissioners approves the project, the project will most likely be financed with the first payment being due in twenty twenty-five. We would also like to mention the nine-one-one statute sunsets on January thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, and the nine-one-one tariff revenue has been budgeted at a flat amount for twenty twenty-four, for the twenty twenty-four budget. Commissioners, I understand there are some discussions occurring behind the scenes concerning the nine-one-one tariff. However, up to this point, there is nothing on the table concerning an increase in the tariff fee. So therefore, we're being conservative with how we're budgeting this for twenty twenty-four, and we're keeping it at the flat amount.
I spoke with Senator Arby yesterday morning. The worst possible case of a sunset in January is nothing. Right now, the proposal is kind of, looks to be coming out of committee is to extend it one more year to parent rate, which once again, recovered about forty percent of the cost out of our county's county money, right? There seems to be some discussion, but the committee, the committee's gonna get the budget on us, so.
Your financial team would like, will continue to look for opportunities to save money, increase operational efficiencies, and share resources. After each budget, both the preliminary and final, is adopted by the Board of Commissioners, a hard copy of the budget will be presented to the chief clerk, and will be available for public inspection in the Commissioner's office. In addition, budgetary information, both preliminary and final, will be posted on the county's website. A legal notice was published in the local newspaper concerning the availability of the twenty twenty-four preliminary and final budgets. I'd like to thank Gary Bender and Chris Kearns for their contributions to the budgetary review process. Their knowledge and contribution to the process has been invaluable. Your financial team would like to thank all department heads, agencies, directors, and row officers for their cooperation. The final twenty twenty-four budget will be presented to the Board of Commissioners at their meeting on December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Commissioners, if I may, may I move forward with reading the resolution?
You may, Sheriff.
I have to pause right before you read the resolution, and I know during public comment, there was a comment about transparency and about everything that has gone on. The financial team, this is not just a practice that takes place today. This has been ongoing for months. In fact, your budgeting is really done on an annual basis. There's not a time where you're not addressing what the needs of the county are, what our trends are, what there is available, what our reserves are. And so, from that standpoint, there's very much transparency. The point was made that this should have been ahead of time. This is preliminary budget, and what happens, you present preliminary budget, the final budget is voted on at the end of the year. So, it gives us the opportunity to ask questions, to, if we don't know the answer already, that we have been working with you, and again, you've been very responsive. So I think that's extremely important to know, that this is preliminary budget, and we will be voting in the future on the final budget. Thank you.
You're welcome. Preliminary budget resolution, resolution number eleven dash fifteen dash twenty-three. One, to establish the proposed twenty twenty-four real estate mileage at fifteen point nine eight mils to include fifteen point three eight mils for the twenty twenty-four general fund, point six oh mils for the twenty twenty-four funded debt account. Two, to establish the proposed twenty twenty-four per capita tax at five dollars. To adopt the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget for the general fund with a proposed legislative authorization to expend public funds for office department functions within the established budget parameters at an aggregate expenditure limit set at eighty-three million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars, and to be offset by projected revenues of seventy-two million, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred, six hundred and thirty-one dollars, and supplemented by approximately ten million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars from the general fund unassigned fund balance. Four, to adopt the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget for the funded debt account with proposed legislative authorization to expend funds in an amount of two million, eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and one dollars for debt service, to be offset by projected revenues plus carryover restricted fund balance of two million, eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and one dollars. Five, to adopt the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget for the capital projects fund account with proposed legislative authorization to expend public funds for projects within these estimated budget parameters at an aggregate expenditure limit set at seventy thousand, and to be offset by projected revenues plus a carryover restricted fund balance of seventy thousand. Six, to adopt the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget for the capital reserve fund account with proposed legislative authorization to expend public funds for projects within the established budget parameters at an aggregate expenditure limit set at four hundred and sixty thousand, to be offset by projected revenues plus a carryover restricted fund balance of four hundred and sixty thousand. Seven, to adopt the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget for the internal service fund, workers' compensation, with a proposed legislative authorization to expend public funds for workers' compensation claims and administrative expenses within the established budgetary parameters and aggregate expenditure limit set at three hundred and sixty thousand, to be offset by projected revenues of three hundred and eighty thousand. Eight, to adopt the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget for certain special revenue fund accounts with proposed legislative authorization to expend public funds for office departmental functions within the established budget parameters, to be offset by projected revenues or by projected revenues plus a carryover restricted fund balance as follows. Local use funds, expenditures, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred, revenues, eight hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred. Liquid fuels, expenditures, one million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars, revenues, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred. Demolition, expenditures, two million, forty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, revenues, one million, three hundred and thirteen thousand. Foreland preservation, expenditures, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars, revenues, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Human services complex, expenditures, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, revenues, two hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Nine-one-one, expenditures, eight million, thirty-one thousand, and seventy-eight dollars, to be offset by revenues in the same amount. American Rescue Plan, expenditures, eleven million, five hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, revenues, four hundred and six thousand. Tax Reassessment, expenditures, six million, three hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and one dollars, revenues, two hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred dollars. Other agency funds, expenditures, three million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars, to be offset by the same amount in revenues. Offices and Senior Services, six million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, to be offset by the same amount in revenues. Drug and Alcohol, expenditures of four million, fifty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars, to be offset with revenues, three million, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, and seventeen dollars. Mental Health, expenditures, seven million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and seven dollars, to be offset, offset with revenues in the same amount. Children and Youth, twenty-nine million, and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars in expenditures, to be offset by revenues in the same amount. Domestic Relations, expenditures, two million, five hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars, revenues, two million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Nine, to adopt the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget for other special revenue fund accounts with proposed legislative authorization to expend public funds for special programs, for example, aging advisory, offender supervision, the SCBG program, affordable housing, coal lands, DUI, other escrow, conduit, Scoupa County Transportation Authority, Marcella Shell, Emergency Solutions Grant, within established parameters at an aggregate expenditure limit of twenty-eight million, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars, to be offset by projected revenues plus a carryover restricted fund balance of the same amount.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. I appreciate your work, dedication, you and Chris and Gary Bender getting us all across the finish line. We're looking for a, we're not gonna, this is a preliminary, right?
We have to make a motion.
A motion to adopt resolution number eleven dash fifteen twenty-three for the preliminary vote.
So moved.
Second.
On the question roll call?
Commissioner Hetherton?
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes. Thanks, Paul. Bring us to Human Resources. Morning, Carl.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning. Go ahead. Go, please, Paul.
I believe a motion is needed on, I'm sorry, we did the motion on budget adjustments.
Yes.
We do that first. That's okay, that was a, what a presentation there. Morning, just information lightings today, and nine-one-one, the resignation of Albert Levy, Telecommunicator Trainingee, effective eleven, seven, twenty-three. In Human Services, the resignation of Kimberly Bloom, Case Eight Two Volunteer Program, effective eleven, twenty-two, twenty-three. And in MIS, retirement of Stan Nestor, the MIS Director, effective eleven, thirty, twenty-three. Thank you for your report, sir. This is bringing forward the board, I think a motion for, I'm sorry, hang on, we got county there.
Ask for a motion.
We have county administration, that's the wrong page. Coming up in administration, Mr. Bender, do you want to take over?
Yep. First, the approval to reappoint Mary Beth Dougherty, Girardville, PA, to the Scoupa County Housing Authority Advisory Board for a five-year term, effective December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-eight. Motion's requested at this time.
A motion to reappoint Mary Beth Dougherty to the County Housing Board.
So moved.
Second.
On the question roll call?
Commissioner Hetherton?
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovich?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Next, on behalf of the Scoupa River Greenways or Scoupa River Trail, approval requested to pass through resolutions for the Scoupa County to apply for funding from the DCNR Local Share Account Grant Program for three separate projects on the Scoupa River Trail. The three grants and the three construction projects will be managed by the Scoupa River Greenways through an agreement with Scoupa County with the following, and the following are descriptions of the projects. Grant application number one is the Scoupa River, Scoupa River Trail North Mill Creek Section Grant in the amount of seven hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars for the construction of the two-point-five-mile Scoupa River Trail North Mill Creek Section. Grant application number two, the construction of the one-point-three-mile Scoupa River Trail Coal Creek Section. And grant application number three is the Scoupa River Trail Frackville Section Grant in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred dollars for the engineering and construction of the two-point-two-mile Scoupa River Trail in the Frackville Section. And the county has to be the applicant of that, they're asking for a pass-through, and they're asking for a motion at this time.
Okay, I believe, is Julie here, sir?
Yes, she is.
Okay, yeah, can you carry get some comments, Julie?
Good morning, Julie. Good morning, thank you. Yes, we're just asking, Scoupa Greenways is requesting a accounting application for these three different brands for Scoupa River Trail projects. Scoupa River Greenways would manage these projects and be responsible for them. As Mr. Bender said, we cannot apply for them ourselves, because we're not a municipality, and so we'd like to partner with the county to make that application, and we would manage this project. These are three different sections of the Scoupa River Trail in Scoupa County.
And I believe there's no match applied to these, from what I understand.
There's no match applied, and for the two sections where we're applying for construction funding only, we already have the engineering underway, and that's to fund in public.
And I know in the past, the county has definitely participated in many stretches of the trail system throughout the county.
The two sections, the North Mill Creek Section and the Coal Creek Section, the engineering is being finished for that now. Scoupa County has contributed to the engineering funding for that, that's happening now, so your contributions are underway there. And of course, the county has been a tremendous supporter of the trailer, who are in the county, including for the project we just opened up last week at the former Gap, just finally closed, bringing the trail up from Burress County into Scoupa County. We're very excited about, and well, thank you.
I even want to ask you to the presentation, how many miles total with us here, this is all, for this section now completed, how many, roughly, how many miles?
Once we get this section done, for the entire trail, we'll be in Once we get this section done, for the entire trail, we'll be at about eighty-six miles completed, when the trail's completely done, we'll be at a hundred and twenty miles.
Good progress.
That's great.
Any questions for Julie? If not, we're looking for a motion to, three resolutions for Scoupa County to apply for funding from the DCNR local share account grant in this program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On the question roll call?
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hockovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Thank you, thanks for all the work that your staff does and also the volunteers because Greenways and the trail, a lot of volunteers are putting in a lot of hours to make quality of life better, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Again, finally, we have on behalf of Scoupa Conservancy District, two requests, one is to reappoint Lynn Luckaville as public director for a four-year term as a member of the Board of Directors for the Conservancy District, and also to reappoint Commissioner, Mr. Hess as a county commissioner director for the one-year term for the board, January first, twenty twenty-four through twenty-four, December twenty-fourth for Mr. Hess, and a three-year, twenty, twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven for Luckaville. I want to add that I was previously chairman of the board, and you don't realize what goes on down there, it's not contained in the courthouse or in the premises, it's down at the Ag Center, but a lot of work goes on, E and S permits, farm preservation, and I commend Mr. Hess for putting the time in. I've been attending a few meetings, and he, he's right there with his sleeves all up, getting it done, so I appreciate what he, his dedication to that, to that order, so. Is there a motion for these two requests?
So moved.
A second.
On the question roll call?
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hockovich?
Yes.
I abstain on my appointment.
Actually, we've done them separately?
Yes, I think.
Okay, so once again, so we're going to do Luckaville alone. Question roll call?
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hockovich?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Okay, then we'll do Mr. Hess secondly, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that, and on the question roll call?
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hockovich?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hess, I didn't quite do that right, so. Now, is there any business for the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion for.
So moved.
Okay, moving into.